Good evening, everybody. It's 5:00. Thank you for being here. Got a full house tonight. That's exciting. We're looking forward to some great reports. And I know we have some visitors with us from Leadership Lincoln. So, thank you for being here. I know you have to at some point, but you can come again feel free. The door is always open. Public meeting. Board members before him. We have all our board members here tonight. You have an agenda that was emailed out. Floor be open for a motion. Then we approve this agenda or make any changes that you so choose.
Make the motion first?
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any comments? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Great. Okay. Well, if you will all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as a whole. And one of the emails that Ms. Williams sent out. You had the draft minutes from our October 10th meeting. Floor be open for a motion to approve unless there are some changes that you see we need to make.
Would they be approved?
Okay. A motion?
Thank you.
And a second? Any comments about the minutes? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Great. And then in today's email, we have disbursements for the month of October. Any questions for Ms. Williams? The other Ms. Williams?
Would they be approved?
And can we get a motion to approve the disbursements for the month?
Second.
And a second? Any questions about specific ones? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Thank you. Okay. Principals reports. Ralph Askins, Mr. Bobbitt with us tonight. Welcome.
Good evening. How are you? Come here. I'm Mr. Bobbitt.
And the guest speaker?
And I'm going to allow our student rep to tell about the happenings in November. This is, this young lady is an excellent role model, a great leader in our school. She is a shining example of Ralph Askins. She's in the 5th grade. Very well respected, not only by her peers, but by the teachers and the staff members in school. She's student ambassador, safety patrol member. She runs, basically runs the morning show. And Ms. Barnet can tell you that. She's in the play that's coming up this month. And she also won the pumpkin contest this year. And she does all this on her own.
No parental support?
No. Yes. But she is a-
We don't have time.
That's right. But she, she does this in spite of her parents. No. She is an excellent example of what's going on at Ralph Askins. And I'm going to allow her to tell the board what's going on this month. And this is Ms. Nora McCormick.
So, my name is Nora McCormick, and I'm a 5th grade student here at RAS. And so, what we are learning in 5th grade currently is narrative writing in ELA, dividing decimals in math, and World War I and II in social studies. So, we have two exciting events coming up here at RAS. So, we have our, um, production of Charlotte's Web and Harvest Happenings. Please refer to our website or social media for dates and times. These are the two reasons why I love our school. So, number one is all the exciting events that we get to do at school. And number two is the learning experiences that I have at school and that everybody has at school. And, um, we have one more thing to say, Mr. Bobbitt.
And what's that, Nora?
Go Tigers!
Nora, Ralph, do you have a guest with you tonight?
My father.
Great report. Lot of things going on. Lot of things going on. All right. Ms. Jean?
I have two of our cheerleaders here, and they are sporting their new uniform. So, we wore the show off. They've worked hard to fundraise and get their new uniforms this year.
Hi. My name's Lydia Thompson. I'm an 8th grade cheerleader at FMS.
And I'm Leija Denham. I am in 7th grade and also a cheerleader at FMS.
Basketball season is in full swing. Currently, the girls' team has three wins and one loss. The boys' team also has three wins and one loss. This week, we have two away games, one tonight against Highland Rim, and the other is Thursday night against Highland.
Our boys soccer team, coached by Ms. Angie Prince, is already practicing for their upcoming season, which will begin. Softball and baseball tryouts are completed, and their practice will begin soon.
Did you know socks are the number one clothing item needed for those experiencing homelessness? Our Beta Club has just completed a sock drive and collected a total amount of 300 pairs of socks. These will be donated to the Huntsville Good Samaritan Ministry.
We want to wish our Beta students good luck as they travel to Nashville for the state competition on November 20th through 22nd.
My favorite thing about FMS is our break time, where we can take a few minutes to catch up on some work or grab a small lunch.
My favorite thing about being an FMS Tiger is three gym days we get because I think it is really important for people to get exercise and have fun time with one another. And overall, I think it is a good thing that we get the exercise we need in order to stay healthy in life. Our current enrollment at FMS is 6th grade, 80 students, 7th grade, 84 students, 8th grade, 84 students, with a total enrollment at FMS, 248 students.
Thank you all so much. Great report. Well done. Do you have a guest with you?
My mom, Ms. Thompson. Probably is that word.
Thank you all. Great job. Lots going on. Lots going on. All right.
All right. We have a couple of members from the FFA to tell you about their recent trip to national convention.
All right. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Vincent Rulander, and I'm the Fayetteville City FFA chapter treasurer.
My name is Tessa Sloan, and I'm the sentinel for Fayetteville City FFA.
Our chapter sent our officer team to the 95th Annual National FFA Convention and Expo in Indianapolis, Indiana, during the last week of October. Members in attendance were myself, Jessica Howell, Bryce Bills, India Bryson, Aiden Young, Tessa Sloan, Chris Eastlick, and Jameson McGill, along with our chaperones, Ms. Fritz and her husband, Ben Fritz. On the first day of the trip, these members took a tour of the historic Churchill Downs in Louisville, Kentucky, where the Kentucky Derby is held. We learned about the history of the facilities, the industry of horse breeding and racing, and the tradition that is Churchill Downs. We also got to hear from a past professional horse jockey.
While at the actual convention, we attended the general sessions where we were able to listen to keynote speakers like Tamika Catchings and retiring addresses from the National FFA officers. At the convention center, students were able to explore through the Career and College Expo. There were colleges from all over the country there to highlight their agricultural studies programs. There were also industry professionals from large agricultural companies like John Deere, Cenjata, Tractor Supply Company, Dodge, and many more. While students talked with these companies, they were able to learn about possible job opportunities for their future. On Friday of our trip, we traveled to Fair Oaks, Indiana, to tour Fair Oaks Farms, where Fairlife Milk is produced. The farm allowed us to see their dairy production process from birth all the way until their mature milk-producing lives. The dairy industry has many innovative techniques of milking the cows. At Fair Oaks, they have a rotating milking system that allows for 20 cows to be milked at one time. They also have robotic milking machines with tracking devices to cut down on their labor costs and manpower of the milking process.
We also got to tour the swine production site. On this, they had an educational center where we got to walk through the entire swine breeding process, their life process from day one, and we even got a chance to witness a litter of piglets being born. Their entire facility was based around educating the public on agricultural production, so our students had a great and informative experience. On our final day, we got to honor our American degree recipients. As the highest degree achievable in the National FFA organization, the American FFA degree shows an FFA member's dedication to his or her chapter and state association. It demonstrates the effort FFA members applied towards their supervised agricultural experience and the outstanding leadership abilities and community involvement they exhibit through their FFA career. American FFA degree recipients show promise for the future and have gone above and beyond to achieve excellence. Our American degree recipients this year were Ambria Brown, Will Bryant, Shelby Frazier, Levi Ogil, Zach Snotty, and Andy Young. This is a huge accomplishment, and we commend these students for their commitment to FFA.
Overall, we had a very successful trip to the 95th Annual National FFA Convention and Expo. This trip would not have been possible without the support of our school and all of you. For that, we thank you. Thank you again for allowing us to come and speak to you tonight. We will now entertain any questions you may have about our National FFA trip.
No any questions, but I do have a comment. Great speakers, y'all. Remember?
Thank you.
I get the sense that maybe you get some practice on this.
Just a little bit.
Okay.
Well done. Yeah. That's fascinating. So, did you get the whole, one of the new pigs? You said you got to see a litter of them.
No, they were in the whole breeding facility, so we just got to see it from afar.
Okay. That seems kind of cool.
Now, the Fairlife Milk, that's what you like.
That's what I drink all the time. Walmart don't care anymore. It just stopped like last month. Well, thank y'all so much for that.
Thank you, guys.
Well done.
We have our advisor, Ms. Fritz, and her baby, JD.
So, did JD get to go to the-
He did. He was a trooper.
I suspect that he probably did.
That's a requirement when you're FFA sponsors. You can't go everywhere.
Thank y'all. And congratulations on all the honors. We do have a short staff, a bit short staff tonight due to some various conflicts and schedules with our supervisors and remaining staff. But Mr. Jones is here to start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I have a relatively brief report tonight. We'll start off with the Dome project. Nothing's really any different from the last report. They have had everything beyond the 60 days that they're allotted in conversations Thursday and Friday of last week. We were basically, we being myself, Greg, our team, and TEMA were told that the manpower's just not there to expedite it any quicker than it is. So, we'll get our first reimbursement check when they're able to process it. And we anticipate that coming quickly, whatever, quickly is a relative term. That's just the reality of the situation. Now, when we get that, we'll immediately be able to close out the first grant, which is the 75-25. But we can't, we have the approval for the second grant, but we can't start that until we close the other one out. So, it's interesting when you have two bureaucracies with timelines jostling with one another, and we're just kind of the outside observer. But that's really where we're at. Everything is as it should be except for timeframes. And so, we've surpassed and like really killed our timeline, got everything in way ahead of schedule, but it's in the pipeline. And I'm sure that all the monies that have come out, they really probably are shorthanded in their ability to verify everything and get these checks out in a timely manner. So, hopefully, once we get the first one, it'll get better. But I can't say that it will. I mean, this may be a recurring thing. I just want the board to know that this is something that's not in our control, and this might be a consistent conversation that we have that it's beyond their 60-day window. It remains to be seen. We're going to hope for the best.
That's a FEMA 60-day window.
It's really TEMA, but it's the state because it's going through the state bureaucracy now. And so, as the state checks and balances all of the federal monies that come through, that's kind of where the logjam is. I don't want to be more specific than that because I want to have good relationships with the office.
Well, that's right.
This is a broadcast meeting. So, yes, I don't want to name names, but there's an office, and I'm sure they are overwhelmed with a lot of these requests. That being said, good news on the transportation front. We have our new bus. I'm going to go over to the courthouse tomorrow with some documentation, try to get the process started for registration. Then we will hope that the troopers come by, do their inspection of the bus, and we may, you know, within this semester, we anticipate having this bus out on the road. It seems to be really nice. It's got air conditioning, not that we'll need it a lot right now, but it's going to be great this spring, and we're excited about that. We appreciate that budget request being approved so that we can have some nice equipment. The back of the gym, that process is actually going very well ahead of schedule. We have taken out a wall in our remodel. A wall for plumbing has been installed. The heaters have been demoed, and the holes where they were have been sealed with metal. And we have about 50% of all of our fixtures and material on site. So, that's, the material logistics is a big thing. So, I was really, Jeff told me a lot of that today, and I was really pleased that we've got that much already on site. So, this is going nicely. We're pleased with that. We do have some issues with some sewer pumps and things of this nature, just wear and tear. And, you know, when you have a school, you have these big pieces of equipment, and if one of them fails or is damaged or something like that, it's not like you can't go to Walmart and get another one. So, we're, you know, long story short, we're probably going to have about $20,000 worth of unexpected expenditure due to wear and tear. We have an ability to just move something from here to there within our budgets and take care of it. But I wanted to let y'all know that there are some potentials, some where, you know, we might have to get creative if something, it's one layer, we've got two layers of safety on a lot of stuff. One layer of our sewer safety is out, so if the other layer were to go out, we'd have to get really dramatically creative for a little bit. But we have a third fail-safe contingency. In the meantime, we're going to order some new stuff, and when that comes in, then we'll keep some of these others as spare part pieces. So, that's good. And that's the bulk of my report, but I'd be happy to feel going on any details or answering questions that you might have.
So, we're not going to be groundbreaking before the end of this year?
No. I would think the realistic timeline would be bids after Christmas. Advertisements go out, maybe January, early February, bids taken, then a pretty short turnaround into spring, somewhere like that for actual groundbreaking, things like that. Especially because our information says that the company that submitted a bid, a singular bid the first time, is still very interested. So, I know they will be, you know, unless they get a big project and change their mind, they'll be chomping at the bit. It sounds like one of the other companies that, they're finishing a project now, so they may be interested as well. It's always good.
It's working in our favor.
Yeah. And there's, you know, yeah, that would be a really nice situation.
Well, thank you for shepherding these along.
Oh, it's great.
I know on the, on the rework of the area behind the gym, the current gym, there was some thought that maybe even later this semester that might be ready to start using.
That's possible.
It's in the realm of the-
Yeah, it's in the realm of possibility. Because of the holidays, I doubt that we get everything ready, but, you know, and moved in by the end of the semester. But I'm thinking-
But this school year?
Oh, definitely this school year, and probably early next semester is the realistic timeline for that.
And the key there is we control more of our fate today.
Yeah.
This is one of our own statutes.
Our crew, yes. Yes. Jeff and Richard and Knox, and we're pulling in some subs for, you know, $500 job of this and a $500 job of that, just little stuff that needs specialized. But, you know, those are three- and four-hour, specific little projects. And it's, we control that, and it's going much, much more smoothly than having to depend on a big contractor that's got a lot of projects going. We can just, yeah, honestly, if we didn't have to keep the sewer pumps running and some of that stuff, we could get this knocked out pretty quick if we didn't have the other stuff to do.
Which is a great thing. These portables will soon be-
Yeah, yeah. We should-
They'll be long in the past.
Yeah. But the end of this school year, going into the next school year, we should be able to have those completely, completely taken care of and potentially completely removed, depending on how we want to proceed with that.
And that's the end of the question.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Dr. Stiles?
How's everybody doing?
Well, every year, we have to show that we are compliant, and this should be in your packets. And basically, when we receive state and federal funds, we have to make sure we're following all the laws, guidelines, and policies. So, I'm asking the board to sign off that we are compliant, and that's pretty much all I have tonight, so.
Yeah. And this is an annual report. I'm sure y'all saw this in the first email that Ms. Williams sent us last week, actually, where we basically have to certify that we are complying with all state and federal laws and state board of education rules. I'll make a motion that we approve this because I believe we are.
I won't let you guys get into any trouble.
I know you won't.
You can trust me.
I'll make a motion that we approve this. All right. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Well, if you have a hard copy or does Ms. Williams have that that we'll sign later? Okay. Ms. Reed, you have that?
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
That is easy.
That's easy.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Good afternoon. How are you all? Just an update on pre-K and after-school. We had our state visits, and all those were, we were in compliance with everything. Received a lot of positive comments about our after-school program and how we rotate through. And she was very impressed with our after-school program. At the end of October, all of our teachers received their level of effectiveness scores, and all those were very positive. This year, however, we do not have any teachers eligible for tenure. We have nobody on that fifth year of employment. So, next year, we have a huge list, but this year, we were, we didn't have anybody that was eligible for tenure this year. We are wrapping up the audio enhancement. And just to tell you, I think a lot of teachers are very happy with those things. I had a teacher tell me the other day, they're not near as tired when they go home, that they didn't really realize how much they use their voice. And I think the children are enjoying it as well. You, whenever you're in the classrooms, you see their attention. They're really more in tune to what the teacher's doing. So, that's been a very positive for our classrooms. Anybody have any questions for me? I think that's pretty much what's going on in my world right now.
I don't know if the board members may have experienced the audio enhancement. It happens worth a stop-in to a classroom just to-
It really, really is. And I know Ms. Jean is really enjoying having an intercom system. And, you know, she was the one that really did not last year have an intercom system. And that has really helped tremendously.
We've got three intercom systems in all three schools.
All three schools.
I guess we've not had that. Mr. Jones, you making, when do you think the last time we had an intercom system in our schools?
Um, we built that one. Yeah. It's been forever. Askins have had to replace one, but the other two haven't in decades.
Okay. So, I know-
As a matter of fact, I know the system at Fayetteville Junior High, Fayetteville High School is the same one that was there when I came in '01, '02.
And I can say, I don't, they're very easy to use. You know, all the secretary has to just go over and touch the room, and it calls the room. The alert system that we have with that is just amazing. And we even have extras for our nurses and our SROs if they were to be out in the building. They have a direct signal that it will send a signal to the office, and they can get to that area. So, it's very impressive. If you've not seen it, I'm like, Mr. Clark, you need to go and look at it.
They'll be happy to demo it. Excited to do it.
Yes, they will. Very excited.
Because they've tried it, and it's made a big difference.
It has made a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Financial matters with Ms. Williams.
So, October financial reports. We'll start out with the revenues. And this is July through October months that we've received for the general purpose budget and also the cafeteria budgets. And, um, do we need to get those approved? Can I just-
No, these are just informational, and they are so helpful.
And then, then the next one is the October's expenditure reports. And it has the different classifications with the year-to-date expenditure from July through October. And then, we're moving to the ESTR 2.0 budget. ESTR 2.0 budget, we're in our final year of the budget. It's $1,000,695.2, and this is a carryover what was left unexpended from last year. And those funds do have to be expended by June 30th this year. And you can see there are different itemized portions of the budgets. And, um, you not getting any questions on that? So, it's hard. It kind of comes in turning sideways.
So, those, we do need to approve the ESTR 2.0?
Yes.
That's the one I was looking at. This is the one that's 1.0, 13695?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the ESTR 2.0 budget to begin closing that out. And I got a second. Any discussion of that? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Okay. Thanks. And we've got ESTR 3.0.
Yes. This runs through June 30th of '24, and the amount is $1,027,241.86. And the different categories on how the money is going to be projected to spend. And we do, we've ordered the, another set of Chromebooks, and we have, and laptops, and we have just received the bus, just not paid for, but we have, we've just received it.
Yeah.
Friday, Thursday, Friday. And I just ask, does this budget be approved?
Got a motion, and I'll second that. Any discussion? ESTR 3.0 budget? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Great.
And then, the last item is the ESTR 2.0 and 3.0 application, which does include the budget, but it's also the history of the, since the grant, the details of what has happened with the grant. It's basically the same. It's got the budget, and it's also got the status of like approvals and the different budget amendments and stuff.
Okay. And we can approve both of that, that application.
Yes. And I believe your signature page in your package.
Mm-hmm.
We'll just-
Okay. Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the FY '23 ESTR 2.0 and 3.0 application.
No.
Okay. Second, any discussion of that before we go? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Great. Thank you. And that's our financial matters for the time being. Okay. Committee reports, facilities and transportation. Anything? Well, they didn't meet. Awesome. Awesome.
We didn't meet. Had a great meeting. Have my place scheduled, and it's a great just overview and kind of a long-term plan. It's pleased.
Fantastic. On finance, we also met, and- Okay, on finance, we also met, and we'll talk more about schedules for the, especially for the year ahead, but we do have two things we need to approve. One is an invoice, invoice number 12 to Broadus and Associates. Again, this is dome project-related, the amount of $19,336 for project and program management services. I would make a motion that we approve that invoice number 12. Have a second. Any discussion of that? This will go on to the city, of course, for action. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. And then we also have another receipt, invoice number 13 from Broadus and Associates for $19,336 for project and program management services on this FEMA project as well. I would make a motion that we approve invoice number 13. And I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
Could I interrupt just a minute?
Yes, sir.
We got the number 12, and I don't believe we have the number 13 on the agenda.
That will be on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Maybe in a later, later in the month.
It's because it came in between.
So we do, we do, the 12, Mark, that's still good.
All right, good catch. I always say this about Walden and Brian, he does not miss anything, let me tell you. And that's a great thing for the city available. Thank you so much. Insurance and policy. Ms. Hopkins has some things to talk about tonight.
We had on October 20th, so the following policies were reviewed with no revision, and we have a list of policies.
We do.
So I moved to approve the following policy.
Okay.
With no revision.
That list with no revision, okay.
Right.
So I have a motion? And a second. Any discussion about those? All right, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Any further policy matters or insurance matters tonight? Okay. Superintendent's report, Ms. Hopkins?
First, we'll talk about that, you know, we had to miss a few days of school due to flu. Our high school, middle school seem to be doing pretty good, but Ralph Askins last week was a struggle for staffing. And as, which is kind of how we make those decisions, it has more to do with staffing than it does with the student population, but it is still a little struggle at Ralph Askins as we speak. Want you to know we're still having some issues, and I know that Dr. Styles is going to meet with Ms. Whitehead in the morning to look at that. So just to let you know, we're still having some staffing issues at Ralph Askins, and we may have to do some adjustments. But we've already used, I think, three days maybe of our days, and, you know, they're tough to come by, you know, especially with the weather when it comes up. So just letting you know that we are looking at that.
But that's not unique to Fayetteville City or Lincoln County or anywhere, right? You talked to, and I'm sure you have, friends in other communities, states even, it's just a hard flu season.
It is, and of course, some of the questions have been, you know, why do we not cancel the, let's say, the state football game? We canceled everything that we had control of. Obviously, we do not have control of whether we cancel a T double S A, you know, a football game the way it is. If we were to do something like that, they would not only fine us, they would also put us on probation. And the way that I understand it is our basketball team would not be able to participate in the playoffs if we were to do that. So I know some people are concerned about why would you do this or that, you know, we sometimes we just follow the rules.
We have contractual obligations with the list of like.
And so just for the record, I want that out there, that, you know, when we're making those decisions, those are very tough decisions, but there's some decisions that are really out of our hands, and so we only can control what we can control, but.
And that too is not unique to Fayetteville City.
That too is not.
I mean, there's multiple schools are facing that same thing.
Additional closure days for sitness, we don't have the option to do e-learning like we were before, or like this.
Not, not in the way that we did in the past. We will have, we do have one e-learning day that we do have available for us.
Just one?
Just one. And we kind of have plans for that. So, but that's not to say that we would not go back and, you know, make some adjustments. The other thing is, not ready to reach announce out loud yet, but we have set a date for graduation, and we'll be making that probably next month, but, you know, to everybody.
So that just, remote learning is off the table for?
At any length.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So I'd like, I'd like for y'all to approve F H, F H S Beta Club attending the state convention on November the 28th through the 30th in Nashville. That's my recommendation.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion of that? I saw that in the packet that was mailed out, emailed out. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Great.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, great. Well, there are a few other matters, and I'm trying to get to them. The, there's a 2023 schedule of meetings that was emailed out. I just went in the other. It was anyone that I was looking at earlier in the meeting. In any event, it lists our, the dates that are going to be our monthly meetings for 2023. We have policy number 1.402 that is notification of meetings, and that is that we will publish a schedule of all regular meetings for the year, and so we need to approve that schedule tonight, and that was, which email has been the one that went out today?
Wednesday.
One of, no, we're excited.
Okay. Fifteen attachments, but I don't see which attachment it is. What am I missing here? Somebody call out the name of it.
Can't find it.
Oh, here, no, that's not, that's the board, that was the policy, so we have to be, literally, I was looking at it earlier.
It's under Fayetteville City School.
Oh, right, right, schedule, there we go, there we go. It was the Fayetteville City Schools thing that was thrown off at a glance. So yes, it lists January through December meetings, and then you'll see the footnotes at the bottom that have been made to say that the finance committee will meet the last Monday of each month at 1:00 P. M. at the central office. Facilities committee will meet the third Wednesday of each month, except December, at 4:00 P. M. at the central office, and the policy committee will meet as needed in the central office, and they will announce their own specific meeting dates in compliance with the sunshine law. So this, this covers us to not only satisfy the policy that we have, but also it will be proper notification to the public. We'll post this, and this will be made broadly available to the general public. So unless anybody has a problem with that, I would make a motion that we approve and publish this schedule of meetings for 2023. Is that a second? Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so that passes. I also have a resolution for your consideration tonight, no pressure. Resolution of appreciation of our superintendent of the Fayetteville Board of Education, whereas our superintendent works diligently to ensure staff members and students grow and develop to their full potential and supports any and all programs that make it all happen, and whereas our superintendent is intentional about making quality decisions about what is best for every student and staff member, and whereas he ensures our schools operate effectively by creating appropriate budgets for our system, and whereas he ensures that our schools and staff are the best employees in the area. Therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Board of Education officially recognizing services of Mr. Bill Hopkins to the staff members, students, and community of Fayetteville City School System. Be it further resolved, the Fayetteville City School System extends appreciation to Mr. Bill Hopkins for the effort he has made to enhance the learning and working environment for every staff member and student in all of our schools. Be it further resolved, the Fayetteville City Board of Education declares November 17th, 2022 as Superintendent Appreciation Day in the Fayetteville City Schools. And be it further resolved, this resolution, this resolution of appreciation for the superintendent to be reported and put in the minutes of the Board of Education for this seventh day of November 2022. That would be next Thursday, November 17th, Superintendent Appreciation Day, should you choose to approve this resolution.
And Ben has gotten a little block of wood, and he's putting that statue.
A little block of wood.
He's been in town.
Okay. Well, if nobody else will, I'll make a motion that we approve this one.
Matt asked him to do something special for me.
I have a second, so we're moving that, we're making progress here. Any discussion before we, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Well done, okay. Well, we sincerely do. We joke about it, but we do appreciate it.
I don't know. I didn't hear it loud enough over here, though. Can we have voice vote comment?
There are no dissents and no no votes, so we have to assume that it gets passed. That's right. So I do have a little bit of news here. Of course, our student, member of our board was our district, TSBA District Student Award Recognition Award winner. And do you, do you get a copy, you don't get a copy of this probably, you hardly wouldn't. So your picture is in this issue, and so I want to make sure and give you this and draw the board members' attention to the fact that not only Isabella's picture is here as a student recognition award winner for South Central District, but also Jade Witt, who was the South Central District Volunteer Recognition, his picture's in here too. But in any event, you can have my copy of this, because I know your family would like to see the public, this publication. It's an exciting thing. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
We are proud of you.
Well deserved.
Thank you.
Well deserved, that's right. And I want to say best wishes really to the Tigers going forward. This is a sort of time of year where it gets a lot of stress closing out through the playoff games and football, and there's so much attention on that, and there's been so much attention. I think, to me, the most notable thing is, of course, Fayetteville and Lincoln County, our community lies outside the Nashville media market. Though any, any media outlet will tell you that. We are just not part of the 615, so we are not relevant and covered in their, in their media market. But if you, if you do a word search, a keyword search on Fayetteville or Tigers in the Tennessee and over the last, this fall semester, it will, it will not surprise us, but it could surprise some, how many times Fayetteville is talked about in the Nashville paper, and that is not a normal thing. And so I think just the additional recognition that Fayetteville and Lincoln County are getting because of the performance of our football team, it takes a lot to be ranked in the number one in the A P poll week after week, and it takes a lot to continue to maintain that status. So we want, we really want them to continue strong and healthy so that they can, they can finish out this season strong. I'm sure it's exciting at school with the, with all the attention being on the great Fayetteville Tiger football team. So we want to, want to see them close out strong and then continue that in the basketball and the spring, winter and spring sports. But a lot of, a lot of recognition of our community, and that's, you know, when you're bringing, bringing positive notes to your community, it's more than just the sport you play or the school you're a team, it's really our community that's benefiting from it.
And Vincent, well, I took him to high school, didn't he?
Our husband, star shield at the school level, yes.
So he'll be competing for the state title.
That's not my scene, I thought he was going to be doing something like that.
He probably will.
That was for his tennis.
Well deserved.
Championship.
So, so much good work in the system. We appreciate everybody. And as we said before the meeting, just a reminder, our next board meeting will be Monday, December 5th, 5:00 P. M. in this room, and good luck to all candidates in tomorrow's election. So election season will wrap up tomorrow, and we'll move forward. Any final comments before we go? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.